The June 18th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Board of Directors of Oxford Preparatory Academy. It will be in closed session at 2:00 PM, open session, we'll return to open session at 3:30 PM. Call to order at 2:08. Meeting location is Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley Campus, 22882 Lumont Drive, Lake Forest, California. Teleconference location, Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County Campus, 23000 Via Santa Maria, Mission Viejo, California. The public, including public attending the teleconference location, are invited to address the board regarding items listed on the agenda. Comments on an agenda item will be accepted during consideration of that item or prior to consideration of the item in the case of a closed session item. Please turn in comment cards to the board secretary prior to the item you wish to speak on. We'll start with call to order. Raymond Jackson, Vice Chair.
Present.
Priscilla Trichet, Secretary.
Present.
Joshua Teepel, Treasurer.
Present.
Mary Campos, Member. Oh, and Joseph Haney, Chair, present. Fledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approval of agenda for regular meeting, board meeting for June 18th, 2018. Recommend the Board of Directors approve agenda for regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item B, Public Announcement of Reason for Closed Session. Conference, A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Government Code 54956.9D4. B, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Government Code 54956.9D2. Two matters. And C, Public Employment, Position Chancellor. Are there any comments on the closed session items? Chancellor and Dean, I stand corrected. Do I have any comments on closed session items? We are going into closed session at 2:10 PM. All right, we returned back from closed session at 4:07 PM with nothing to report out. We will be returning to closed session later. I would like to make a motion to pull item E2 in table F4. Do I have a motion? Yes, that is my motion.
You can't make one.
I do.
Say that, Joseph, E2?
Pull item E2 from the agenda, the warrant reports for May 2018.
Okay.
And then we table item F4. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, this motion passes. Item 3B, Presentations, Reports, and Correspondence. We'll start with site updates, Saddleback Valley.
Hello, I'm Karen Bridges. I am the dean, I'm gonna hold this, whoa, I just pulled down, of the Saddleback campus to kind of give you a brief update of what has gone on since the last time. So, we did participate in our eighth grade versus staff softball game. The staff pulled out a squeaker, 16 to 12, and we want to give a big thanks to Mr. Sax, who hit his first homerun over the fence ever. So, Mr. Sax, thank you.
Aye.
We also had our open house and art showcase. It was fantastic. It was great seeing all the parents and the kids here excited to show their classrooms and coming into the showcase that was in honor hall for the art and being able to show what they've been doing with their meet the masters throughout the school year. Bowling with professors, so we had that event. That was a great event. It was a huge turnout and we found out that the kids are way better bowlers than the staff. And we even used bumpers and it just didn't work out for us. And then eighth grade promotion and the last day of school promotion was fantastic. Instead of, I think we had 10 the previous years, so we had roughly 40 eighth graders promote. The student speakers were fantastic and the little reception afterwards was great as well with the cookies and the brownies and the cake and the cupcakes and water. We also had an end of the year staff meeting. We had a reflection piece and our staff really craves more outside professional development, so we are looking to make sure that that happens for the next school year. And then in the last day of school, our champions walked the neighborhood and gave thank you notes to our neighbors, just thanking them for basically their patience and putting up with traffic and just welcoming us into their community. So, that's all I have for Saddleback. Next up is Mr. Sessions. Yes?
Hello, Nick Sessions, Dean at SOC. Very similar to Mr. Bridges, we had our eighth grade versus staff game. We also barely won. I think it was 16-13. The students are really strong and they were doing a good job, so we won. We had an eighth grade only dance. That was a success, out on our eighth grade greens. We had a good staff barbecue. We also had a meaningful staff town hall. We did a similar format as to what we used with all of our stakeholders, where you go around with different questions and then identifying areas that needed them, putting the stickers. Staff identified that more meaningful PD, specifically around reading intervention, also really craving consistent ELA curriculum, and then maintaining professionalism in all aspects. There were key areas that were identified that the admin team's looking at, trying to make those things be focal points for us in the fall. By all accounts, it was a successful end of the year. Our promotion went off without a hitch and that's really it for SOC.
Thank you, Mr. Sessions.
Mr. Sessions, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I was gonna talk in a different part, but yes, just that.
Never mind.
Never mind.
I didn't realize you pulled a card.
With a card, we can limit the amount of time, which might be easier. That takes us into item C, Comments from the Board of Directors. We'll start at the far end of the table. Mr. Jackson?
I have nothing.
Oh, I think you skipped something.
Did I skip something?
Update regarding.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Update regarding Calsters Audit.
Well, with the exception of one more day of work, we have completed the Calsters Audit. We submitted everything and got a response back on an error that was discovered from two years ago, three years ago regarding two employees. Those are being corrected tomorrow and we will be complete.
That's good to hear. Now, comments from the Board of Directors. Mr. Jackson?
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Trichet. Oh, sorry, I'm jumping around. Ms. Campos?
No comment.
Mr. Teepel?
No comments.
Ms. Trichet?
No comment.
Which brings it to me. I don't really have any prepared comments. I am saving them for tomorrow, so. That runs us through that. Takes us to comments from the interim executive director, which I understand she wishes to pull.
I just want to congratulate everyone on the great promotion, both sites. I was very impressed. And I will reserve my other comments for tomorrow night.
All right. That now takes us to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Would that return Mr. Sessions to the front?
I just wanted to take this time to just say thank you to the entire OPA community. I've absolutely loved being part of the OPA team. I have accepted employment elsewhere and I just wanted to say thank you that I've always cherished my time at OPA and it's a no small part to the amazing people at OPA, right? Specifically, our energetic, crazy, positive office staff members. Our campuses are clean and beautiful because of all the hard work of our custodial teams. Our professors, the non-core teachers, instructional aides, proctors, parent volunteers have continually made OPA a place where we have the mindset that everybody grows, right? And not just academically, but socially and emotionally, right? We're in the business of trying to make better people for tomorrow. Also wanted to say thank you to the board. This is a full-time job for you, plus your other full-time job, and you guys have done a great job of tackling a number of significant issues. Thank you to Ms. Mary Catherine. I genuinely loved working with you these last couple months at SOC. Dr. Hall, I feel like I've learned so much from you and you are a great leader. And Kathy, I want to say that you came in at a very hard time. And Michelle, right, Michelle, she's not here right now, but shout out to Michelle. It was great working with her, but that you've done a great job and that you were dealt a hard hand and that as an organization, I'm confident we're gonna keep going forward, but just that I'm thankful for the time I've had at OPA and I'm gonna genuinely miss all the SOC kiddos. So, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, Mr. Sessions. We wish you and expect nothing but the best from you as you go forward. Do we have any more comments? That was it? Wow, okay. Takes us into E, Items Scheduled for Consent. One, Minutes from the regular board meeting, 5/24/18, and special meeting 5/24/18. We pulled the warrant report and the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
I believe we just pulled the warrant report.
Yes, that's why I said we pulled the warrant report.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a comment.
Please do.
So, specifically on item number B5, when we do the, when we do the minutes, is there any way that we can, that we can include commitment dates? So, for example, if it says Raymond commits to do something, instead of just saying that and stopping, can we say Raymond commits to do this by such and such date? So, specifically in item B5, it talked about, I'm just picking one out at random, it just happens to be something for Kathleen, but she's saying she's gonna have some Calsters reports, but it doesn't say when. And I know that's an additional burden and it's not something that we've done before, but it sure would, from an accountability point of view, would be delightful if we could do that. If we could endeavor to do it, right? It doesn't happen every time. Thanks.
Any further comment on the items therefore consent? We have a motion and a second to approve them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. This takes us to items F on the calendar, Items for Discussion and/or Action. Item 1, Approve Theodora Oranger Legal Services Invoice. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. The invoice from Theodora Oranger for legal services performed in March 2018 in the amount of $29,618.46 is brought to the board for consideration. Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion just so we can talk about it.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Raymond, Mr. Jackson, I suspect you wanted to discuss this.
So, the matter, this is an invoice for 29,000, yeah, 29,618. And the matter name is Oxford Preparatory Academy versus Chino Valley Unified. Is this invoice right?
Yes, it is. This is the time prior to the time that we got commitment from CCSA to cover the rest of the expenses, so this was in response to the initial replies back from Chino Valley Unified regarding their analysis of our submission. That makes sense?
Nope. No, it doesn't. So, if CCSA is gonna pay for it, why are we getting an invoice for it?
CCSA picked up after this, so this was done prior to us signing anything by CCSA.
Well, I thought the agreement with them said that they would pay the first X number of dollars. They didn't say I would pay the X number of dollars after you spent 30,000. They said, I will pay the first X number of dollars. And then, because at that point, the original commitment was CCSA pays X number, the first X number of dollars. We said, good, agreement inked. Then we went back to them. Now, we have a new agreement with them saying they would pick up.
An additional, right, an additional, yeah, 15,000.
So, what I'm saying about this is.
Oh, okay. There are other things on that invoice besides just the Chino Valley.
Okay, well, this one, that one's $21,000 worth, so that's the substantial, that's the.
No, 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 no. This total's 29,000. There was 21,000 that was paid.
Okay, so what's the?
We don't have the.
The only matter name I see on here is for Oxford, is for Chino.
I can look at the backup documentation that they send that we can't include in the packet and get a specific itemized amount for you.
Since we're going back to closed session, can we see that when we go to closed session and then we can bring this back to approve post-close session?
It's under anticipated litigation, so yes. Yes.
Would that work, Mr. Jackson?
Certainly.
Is there any further discussion on this point?
So, we're not gonna, so we're not gonna pay it until we go to closed session and figure it out and then we talk about it again, or how's this gonna work?
So, we would have to first have a motion, we would have to have, the person who made the motion, which I believe was you, pull back your motion, and then we would have to have a new motion to review the detailed invoice in closed session as it relates to a matter we already had under closed sessions, agenda items. Then we could come out of closed session and approve it.
Okay, well, I am never gonna sound as good as you just sounded.
So, you're just gonna table the item until after closed session?
That's a more efficient way to say it.
I can say that. I would like to make a motion to table this item until after closed session.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, fantastic, this matter has been tabled till after closed session. Item 2 is approve Momni Cafe invoices. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. These invoices from Momni Cafe for services performed in April and May of 2018 in the amount of $50,955.06 are brought to the board for consideration. We have two subitems, item 3F2A, April interim executive director, board training and personnel services in the amount of $23,945.06, and item 3F2B, May executive director, personnel and document retrieval in the amount of $27,054.06. Do I have a motion before the board?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have discussion.
Please do.
So, in the spirit of this whole detail thing, so we signed up, anyway, these are pretty significant, right? Kathleen's done a lot of work. Your staff has done a lot of work. Is it available for us to look at, like what periods this is for, what, who is here, this is for what weeks, what kind of topics?
Yes, that's the backup documentation.
We have that available?
I have it on my laptop. I can give it to you during, during closed session. Part of it is confidential, but part of the, where, where it says the travel and the transportation car and air, those are for flights back and forth and the car rental. And for the times in April and May that I, that I was down here, the services under Amber are all personnel. Part of, the first part of it for April was for the personnel audit that she did, and the second part was the analysis of the jobs and the salary schedules.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't deny that you guys have done a lot of work, and it's not that I'm saying that these numbers are out of whack. It's just that I feel like we, we talk so frequently about our fiduciary obligation, and I say that flippantly, but in all sincerity, we really owe our constituents, all of our constituents, the fact that we're gonna look at things and be critical of them.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a day-by-day analysis that is submitted with us.
Okay. So, do I make a, do I modify my motion to say we table this until I get to look at that stuff?
You first have to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And then you would have to make a new motion to table this to, after we come back from closed session.
And may I pretty please make a new motion to table this until after we come back from closed session?
Because use the magic word, absolutely. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, this motion passes. Takes us to item 3, Approve Classified and/or Confidential and Administrative Salary Schedule. Oxford staff has done comparisons with surrounding districts to create a salary schedule for classified, confidential, and administrative staff, which aligns closely with our Biden Unified School District for similar positions as was used for the certificated salary, and puts all salaries within the top 25% of other districts and includes annual step increases. The board will consider for approval with an effective date of July 1, 2018, presented by Kathleen Doherty. Oh, we have two speakers.
Evening, Board. My name is Mary Catherine Boucher. I'm one of the deans at SOC. I first would like to say that I'm speaking with all due respect to upper administration and the board members. I would also like to make it clear that I'm not speaking because of anything that has to do with my, the salary for my position, because as of June 28th, I will no longer be employed with Oxford Preparatory Academy. However, I do feel the need to speak up for our classified staff members, especially those who have reached out to me with their concerns. The staff has expressed that this salary schedule's a bit disheartening, especially there's a big concern with the lack of communication that was taking place between those staff members and any salary decreases that they may be receiving. This is very short notice for them to learn of any pay cuts, and it affects their livelihood and kind of how they're figuring out their lives and paying bills. They weren't expecting pay decreases while teachers received nice pay raises. It over, impacts overall the morale on campus and could potentially create more of a divide between our classified and certificated staff, which, when you're looking at the philosophy behind OPA, we're supposed to all be on one team. You know, one side can't function without the other. We've all made a commitment to transparency and the salary schedule, in my opinion, has lacked transparency from the very beginning. The first time anyone saw this was Friday, when it was posted online. There wasn't a committee that was formed or input from members of the staff. I understand that budgets are tight, but I believe that there could be different cuts in other areas potentially. I do have maybe a solution or an idea for one that could be talked about. It's just to keep classified where they are, where they are now, freeze their salaries in some sort of grandfather sense, and could just cut back their number of workdays. This wouldn't have such a large impact on their livelihood, and, you know, they're just kind of feeling not valued or not heard. So, I wanted to be the voice for them today, and I encourage the board to maybe relook at this or not take action on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Second?
Hello, Board. I just wanna, we're one OPA in that Ms. Boucher and I have had a number of employees expressing concern, and I think, just looking at it, a whole picture, where we've done a really good job with our teachers, but, I mean, our budget is, there's a lot of things going on with the budget, right? And I think we can't offer aggressive raises to teachers and then to offset that, possibly really negatively impact people's livelihoods with the classified. I'm not saying that we should take away those raises for teachers, but I think, I think we need to really look at it and be mindful of, are these things sustainable, right? And would we maybe too aggressive with the teacher's salary schedule, and is that something that we need to look at, right? Because looking at the budget for next year, where there's a lot of, there's a lot of things coming up, right, for SOC and just as an organization, and that before we make any decision with the classified, just be mindful of that. And I know there's no easy solution. There isn't, right? We can't just create more money, right? But just, Team Boucher and I have been talking and talking to a number of employees, and they have concerns, and I wanted to speak on their behalf as well, just because our program would not go without our classified staff, right? They wouldn't. It wouldn't. And I think if there is a way to look at that and balance the things that we did for teachers with also compensating our classified, I think that would be something to look at, and I don't know how that works, right? It's already been approved, the salary schedule, but I think the sustainability of it, looking at it, when we look at the budget projections, it's hard to sustain that, right? And I know we wanted to go and be one of the top, but maybe we need to be one of, better than we were, but also still be in a good place financially. So, I just wanted to speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Pretty please. So, you're saying that the, the teachers got an increase?
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like the certificated.
Classified.
Or the classified folks are gonna get a reduction across the board?
I'm not saying across the board.
Okay.
But people have had concerns, right? And just in general, with our budget, there's concerns, right? And I think we need to really look at how we're gonna prioritize those dollars, because we need to be mindful, right? Especially if we're gonna try to get an ELA curriculum or what have you. There's a number of key decisions that have to be made by the board, and how are we gonna make, really maximize our spending power? So, I think classified staff have seen it as, okay, now I'm gonna be working less days, possibly my pay has maybe gone down, but the, the big thing is there's, we need to really recommit to the communication piece, I think is the big thing, right? Everybody is valued, right? Everybody plays a role at OPA, and I think that was the part that, just going forward, we can really try to redouble backup with them, because that was something that's been concerned, a concern brought to us. Okay? Okay, thank you.
So, presented by Captain Doherty.
Thank you. So, I would like to present the salary schedule for the administrative side and then the classified confidential. We use the exact same comparisons for the, these three categories as we did for the certificated. In this particular instance, the certificated were well below the norm, where our classified and confidential were well above the norm. So, we did some analysis and came up with a schedule that is, again, aligned to the same schedule that the certificated is aligned to, and we monitored the same number of days. We actually did, in some instances, keep the salary the same and drop the number of days so that we could get it in, in a comparable mode. We've added steps to each of these schedules, which we didn't have in the past, and in this case, we also added something that we did not have with the certificated, which is a longevity bonus at the end of five years, and still granting the master's and doctorate for the administrative piece. The, it was much more difficult in this particular instance, so in some cases, we had to take two and three positions and look at the salaries for those positions and meld them into one, and whenever possible, we chose the higher of those salaries. So, again, these salaries are reflective of the competitive nature of OPA and are aligned with, within the top 25%, like our certificated salaries are. For a couple of the positions that we have, we are, the salary is, is lower than what has been given in the past, and in some cases, we were paying significantly out of class and out of range, and that has been brought into alignment as well. I did discuss the different salaries and the days with some of the classified and some of the confidential employees, but not all. I didn't have an opportunity to form a committee because unlike the teachers where everybody's in the same category, each one of these folks represents a different category. So, I did have an opportunity to, to discuss some of these positions. And, and then reviewed it all, actually, with one of the office managers prior to finalizing it and posting it last week.
So, the matter brought before us as the Board of Directors is to approve a new classified and administrative salary schedule. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
My, I have some concern in the sense that I don't know, and I'm, because I, like you said, there was no committee or whatever, so my, my question is, do we actually know the? So, my, my question is, do we actually know the, the amount of work that each one of these people actually do? 'Cause I know, for example, charters, we- the staff do something, they, they work, I would say, twice more than in a regular district because they have to take so, so much. So, doing this analysis, was it discussed with them? Or the ones that you've spoke to?
Yes, yes, we actually talked about-
Did you put that into consideration as well?
That was taken into consideration, the different kinds of work that were done and/or the workloads. Some are, um, very similar and others are, are significantly different. Um, particularly when you're talking with the office staff, and primarily, we're talking the office staff here. But, um, the, uh, the workload was considered. Part of, of what we did is present, um, the staffing positions to show the multiple positions that are funded. Whereas in a typical office, it's, it's usually one or two positions that do multiple tasks. In our case, we have multiple positions that are funded, uh, with different titles. So, each of those is taken into account in, in this salary schedule. And then the other thing that is not reflective on this piece of paper is the actual placement on the salary schedule that the employee will have based on their years of experience, uh, in the OPA system. So, it's not like everybody starts at step one. They will be starting at the, um, at the step for, for the number of years of service that they have. Um, and that will make a difference in how you look at this. And because our employees are not used to looking at, at a salary schedule that has growth each year, this is kind of a new concept for them.
So, can I ask an additional question? Sort of to add to Priscilla's. So, do we have a table that goes through the staff that would be impacted by this? Where they are today, where they would be, and what the difference in qualifications are? That would be part of that communication with them to, to understand?
I, I do have that for the administrative and about half of the classified. I haven't gone back through to match each item in the, for, for all of the classified staff.
I would like to see an analysis like that so that we understand the full impact and where those deltas are and why they exist. Like, what's the difference in criteria to meet the different levels?
I, I think that the biggest issue has been that, um, the employees were arbitrarily placed, uh, at a given salary. They weren't placed on a step. They were just given a salary. And so, there is a difference on both sides as to what the same person makes, uh, for the same position. And, uh, they weren't necessarily matched to the criteria in the job description. Um, in some instances, we don't have job descriptions. So, that's a piece of what we're working on.
What's the, if we were to grandfather everybody in at their existing rates, what's the, the pay differential between keeping people at their pay rate and letting them catch up over a period of time versus the reductions that we would take as a result of this action?
There are some people that are overplaced, would never catch up.
Okay.
And there are others that might catch up in a year. And there's not that many, there's actually not that many that are gonna be receiving a reduction. I think when we're looking at the number of people that are receiving a, a reduction, as far as the classified are concerned, we're talking, uh, probably four or five. When we are talking the administrative side, that's different because those salaries were brought into alignment with the current competitive rates. And so, uh, with the exception of somebody new starting on the salary schedule, um, there is a reduction in almost every one of these, with the exception of, I think, two, on the administrative side.
And the, but the dollar amount, what's the dollar amount that we're saving by doing this?
Probably about $65,000. Most of that savings is in the administrative side.
$65,000 per positions?
No, 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 no.
In total?
Total. And again, most of that is in the administrative side. And/or the, the confidential, looking at the top half of the salary schedule. Uh, because many of these positions, because we couldn't necessarily align them, we just kept the current salary because they were within the, the ranges we were looking for anyway, so we just kept them the same.
Ms. Campus, if I'm summarizing correctly what you asked for, did you ask for this chart that's showing what the reductions would be?
Yes, and then the difference between where they are and where they would be with the char, the criteria that justifies that, right? So, if, if you don't meet these standards now based on the new job description, then this is why. Um, so that we understand it completely. And then there's an effective, consistent communication that it ties to as well.
So, Kathleen, I, I'm, I'm getting a sense that, uh, some of us are... It's not that we, we don't agree with this analysis, but we're a little, um-
You're concerned about a reduction for some people.
Yes, not for some people, but-
It would only be a few that would have a reduction.
Okay, no, no. What I'm saying, it's also in the future, like, when you wanna hire, like, to attract people, that's gonna be some issues as well. And to me, that's the, I don't know about other people, but I always feel that the staff in a school, they are the one running the school. Without them, there's no school. They are the, they are the backbone of the school. And I know teachers are important, but the teachers cannot survive without the staff.
And these rates are competitive? And by, by that, I mean, when you take a look at the same positions or maintain, have a different, might have a different name, but it's the same position. In our, um, surrounding districts, these rates are competitive there, within the top 25%?
I, I know. I looked, I looked up, Irvine, some of them are correct, and we're actually paying even more than some of Irvine.
That's right.
I, I agree with that, but that's not the concern right now. I'm just afraid that if we, you know, go forward with this, the impact that's gonna have on, on the campuses. And right now, we're not comfortable with that. So, can we table it?
It's up to you.
What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I have a question about that, actually. So, so I think the, the overarching goal here wasn't to just across the board give the teachers a huge surge forward. It was to say, hey, let's be competitive. If we have results at this level, and it's reasonable to expect that if you're performing at this level, you get compensated at that level. So, we sent Kathleen out to say, hey, go look at places that we consider our, our intellectual equals, I guess, I don't know, but, um, and then come up with them, come up with the across-the-board number. And she did that. And so, we asked her to do the exact same thing here and say, come up with a across-the-board number so that we can stop this, you know, this person is making a whole lot more money than they maybe ought to make, given the exact same situation. So, so in this period where we're sort of, you know, zeroing in on this level, not, some people are gonna, more people are gonna move forward than move backward, but some people are gonna move backward. And it, and it's not because we've, you know, we don't like them or because they've done a bad job as much as it is, they were, they may have been overpaid for what it is that they were doing for some period of time.
I agree.
And so, so that, although that's not enjoyable, coming back to this, you know, fiduciary obligation conversation that we're having, we're, we're having to make some tough calls, and I think Nick Sessions said it great, is that, you know, we gotta make some, some calls that aren't together, aren't gonna be lovely for everybody. But, you know, this is what's gonna help us sustain and thrive, which I think is what we're all about. So, what I'm trying to do is say that I think Kathleen did a, did a fair job of going out there and saying, hey, I'm gonna come up with a competitive level. We're gonna match these people up. And here, and this is, and she's presenting us with her work. And she's asking us to, you know, say, this is good. And if we wanna say, hey, we think you've done good, but nobody can go down, I don't know that, that that's what we asked her to do. So, that's just-
So, so I think, at least what I was saying wasn't disputing whether or not the summary is appropriate, the table, but understanding more of the basis and what those deltas are and why before we approve it. So, I wasn't disputing whether or not the table was right or wrong. I was just looking for more data to help me understand where it's at, to, to say yes or no to that. So, that's all.
And do you have that information, Kathleen?
I do. I have all the comps.
Okay.
I can present it at the next meeting.
Well, I, I think a little bit more than comps, like the summary of, here's what that budget looks like today. Here's what the delta in that budget looks like as a result of this action. And then understanding what the justification for the delta is.
So, you're asking for a tie-in to the budget versus the straight salary schedule that helps us build the budget?
Right, but also, like, the, the basis for that salary schedule, right? To just understand what went into it and how it does impact those people and why. So, if we're saying, and I fully agree with fiduciary responsibility, but if what we're saying is, there's these individuals, no names, right, in this position that were being paid disproportionately higher than what peers are making. And so, therefore, this is that adjustment. Understanding what the difference in responsibility is for the, that change, as well as the, the difference in compensation that then that backtracks to. So that it's an effective communication. It's not, we came up, we have this, this new salary schedule. And be, as a result of it, this individual's gonna take a pay cut. It's being able to understand what that basis was and why it impacts that person. And if it is different criteria for that that aren't met, then that's a fair conversation to have. And I think we owe that to staff. 'Cause as Priscilla said, without staff, the school doesn't exist, right? So, that's all I was saying.
So, where are we at?
I'd still move to approve this schedule as is.
Can I second that? Or do we have to resolve the open motion, the other-
There's a motion on the table already.
There's a motion on the table, so we would have to, whoever made that motion would have to withdraw the motion.
Or you bring it to a vote?
Or bring it to a vote. You made the motion? Was it Raymond? So, would you like to withdraw your motion?
Uh, was it a motion to approve?
Yes.
No?
Okay. I'll second, I'll second Mr. Jackson's motion. Okay. Are there any further questions or comments on this? One thing I would add is I feel a little bit like we're making a decision in a vacuum. This has an impact on the overall bottom line, and I don't know what that overall bottom line looks like at this time. It's one thing to bring someone into an organization and then raise their salary over a period of time, or bring them in at a salary, and then to reduce it down. I do not know the delta between what, how much we are realigning someone's salary, and then not knowing what that $65,000 looks like on the whole of the budget makes it hard to make a decision here. And I understand these numbers are important in order to finalize a budget for the upcoming year, so maybe it's a little bit of a circular argument we have. But it seems like there's a way to get the information so that we can make a more informed decision. I know that in the private sector, if you were to be moved from a high-wage-earning location to a lower-wage-earning location, it's not very common that your salary is cut with that relocation. Uh, the assumption is you become accustomed to living on a certain salary. So, and I'm not saying that always justifies the salaries that we're paying here. It very well may be. I just don't have the background to know. But I think we should be mindful of what we are asking of people at that time, so. With that said, there is a motion and a second to approve the new classified and administrative salary schedule. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Nay.
Nay.
All those abstaining?
All abstain.
This motion does not pass by a vote of two, two to one.
So now, I have a procedural question. So now, does this, does Kathleen get a chance to add this summary that we talked about? That Mary and Priscilla talked about? So, she brings it back?
You can absolutely go back on the next agenda.
Next week, okay.
Which brings us to item five. Approve Resolution Number 2017 dash zero eight and 2017 dash zero nine EPA expenditure plans for 2018, 2019. The Board is required to annual, is required annually to approve the use of Education Protection Act EPA funds in the form of a resolution. Resolution 2017 dash zero eight and Number 2017 dash zero nine EPA expenditure plans for 2018, 19 identifies the use of these funds. The Board will be asked to approve Resolution Number 2017 dash zero eight and Number 2017 dash zero nine, identifying the use of EPA funds for the 2018, 19 year. Presented by Oswaldo Diaz. Do we have any comments? All right, Mr. Diaz.
What, what you have in front of you is, uh, the, the list of expenditures that we're gonna be using with the EPA grant. This is a requirement that, uh, to bring it to the Board and have a Board approval. And just basically is that, uh, that we are allowed to use the funds. If, uh, if we don't get an approval for, for the expenditures, we cannot spend the, the monies. And, uh, definitely, uh, we wouldn't be able to use the resources. And, uh, this is, uh, something that has already been granted to us and is just, uh, the approval of the actual usage of funds.
I'll move to approve the resolutions. Do I have a second?
I second.
I second.
Very eager to get money. Is there any discuss-
Is there some, is there some sort of, oh, go ahead, Joseph, sorry.
No, please.
Is there some sort of clawback provision in all this? Or do we have to make sure that we earmark the funds in a special way? I wanna make sure that later on, in another meeting?
Yeah.
I'm not looking at you saying, we gotta pay back what?
We're not, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna lose these funds, but there is a requirement that they may not be used on any administrative or facilities costs. So, typically speaking, most, most districts and charter schools use them for, um, employee costs that are non-certificated.
Yeah, it also says in there something about, uh, we can't use it for judicial things.
And it's, yeah, right, any legal services. So, there are requirements on how you cannot use the money.
Okay, great.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any comments other than, or questions other than Mr. Jackson? All right, we will go ahead and put that to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion passes five to zero. Takes us to item number six. Public hearing to take input on the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. The Board will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input, recommendations, and suggestions regarding to the drafts of Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, for each school for 2018, 19. They're being developed in conjunction with the Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF, and the new LCFF rubric. Stakeholder groups of both schools have worked throughout this school year to develop priorities which have been incorporated into the LCAP for consideration.
You need to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Sorry.
We are now closing the regular meeting at 4:53 PM. We are opening the public hearing at 4:53 PM.
This is the, um, discussion, the first discussion regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan. Um, it is developed with stakeholder input. And, uh, we have both schools that, uh, have developed the initial draft of the plan. After the stakeholder input session, then we will finalize the plan. This plan is tied directly to the budget, which you are going to see next as a draft. And components of the Local Control Accountability Plan must be reflected in the budget. So, they're kinda tied at the hip. I'm gonna ask Dr. Hall to review both of those plans.
Okay. Um, both of the plans have the same overarching four goals. And they align with the, um, eight state priorities outlined. Conditions of learning, and there are three conditions of learning. Provide all students access to fully credentialed teachers, standards-aligned instructional materials, and safe facilities. Effective implementation of the California State Standards for all students. Ensure all students have access to a broad course of study. Another overarching area within the, um, eight state priorities is pupil outcomes. So, we are tasked with improving student academic achievement, English proficiency- So we are tasked with improving student academic achievement, English proficiency and college and career preparedness. In addition to measuring other student outcomes related to required areas of study. We are also tasked with looking at engagement. So within the eight state priorities, we're asked to look at efforts to seek parent and community involvement in the decision-making process and the educational program of all students. We need to look at efforts to increase attendance rates and reduce the number of chronic absenteeism and suspensions. And we need to highlight school climate and safety. So our two schools have the same overarching goals and have developed different actions. Or slightly different actions under each of those overarching goals. So the first goal is that all students will achieve proficiency in the core content areas. The second goal is all students and staff will have access to and achieve mastery in twenty-first century learning tools and resources. And the third goal is that Oxford Preparatory Academy will be a safe and secure environment for all students and staff. And the fourth goal is that OPA will increase stakeholder input and communication output. So within the drafts, you have, um, actions that are aligned with those overarching goals. And you have preliminary dollar amounts, uh, very preliminary. Um, because we will need to sit with Mr. Diaz and ensure that the numbers that have been placed under actions align with the actual budget.
If I could also draw your attention to one component of both of the plans. Which is the, um, the, the annual review of the goals from the prior year. And what you have are what the annual measurable outcomes were. You have the actions and services that were planned and then those that are, are estimated actuals on what was actually spent. Based on what we said we were going to do and what was done. Um, one thing I do want you to note is that the plan that was adopted at the end of last year for this year was, was pretty generic and nonspecific in some instances. So going back and trying to figure out exactly how much was spent based on the input that was given about what the action plan was, was difficult at best. Particularly given, uh, the response from our back office on trying to itemize that. So for each of the goals, you have the expected and then the actuals. And there might be a discrepancy. It's perfectly all right if you spent more than you said you were going to spend because it was a by gessie by golly last year. Um, and we have much more information this year as we write our goals and our actions on how much it's actually going to cost. I'm not sure that the actions when they were developed were, were, uh, actually took into account the expenditures that they were going to make. So I think that that is the main difference and that was a question that was asked. Why is there a difference between what was projected to be spent and what was actually spent? In most cases, more was spent rather than less. So under each, there's also an analysis of the goal. What did we do right? What did we still need to do? What are our needs? And are we going to see that goal again in our, or are we going to see those actions in the new plan for this year? So that's, that's why there is that analysis to begin with. And then you move into the goals, actions and services. I think it's on page twenty-nine and it's, it seems like it might be repeating itself, but the reality is it's not.
It's not.
Um, the, also the, the component of taking a look at, um, stakeholder engagement. We have to be specific on what kind of stakeholder engagement did we have? And what was the results of that? Did we change our plan from last year? Did, or did we leave it the same based on that engagement? What impact did it have? And so that's what you'll see there in relationship to the stakeholder meetings, to the administrative team talks, to the parent survey, to the, um, student survey. We did not do a staff survey this time. But then, but then the, the, starting on page thirty, and this is for both plans. What you see is an expected annual measure outcome, which is different now because now you're, now you're listing it by what your metric that you're going to use is. In other words, what's the tool that you're going to use? Where's your baseline? What were your results for seventeen, eighteen? And what are your projections for eighteen, nineteen? And those projections will be used next year when we analyze the LCAP. So it's much more specific this time, uh, on the metrics. Whereas before you used a list, we're going to use three things. Now you actually have to itemize it and itemize the growth. So we are going to be tweaking some of this a little bit because I still see some generic language in there. And, and we do have to be specific in, in what we're measuring. It can't be we're going to make growth, but it's going to be we're going to make one percent growth. Or for example, the EL students, uh, which are English learner students. You know, we're going to reclassify twenty percent of our English learner students or, so those, those are the kind of things. And then we'll put actions to do, to actually take care of that. The actions are based on our dollars that we have. So that's the piece where we really have to sit with Oswaldo and say, okay, tell me exactly how much money we now have. Whether it's a personnel cost or whether it is a, um, an item cost, a materials cost, parent education as a cost. Or, um, professional development as a cost. So those are the categories that we typically look at.
How do we have these dramatic departures like for safety as an example where we estimate six and spend twenty-five?
Because there was nothing planned necessarily in safety when they wrote it up as a safety goal. We will provide a safe environment for our kids. But they didn't necessarily put what they were going to specifically do. So things that were done this year in relationship to safety, whether it was, was training on bullying or whether it was putting in new fire alarms. Or things that ran up the bill that were not planned last year. And that was a great one to bring up. New locks on doors, things like that.
I, I found this very general. It's not, if I'm reading this, um, from a district perspective, okay, I see a lot of, we'll do this, we'll do that. But there is no actual plan, like specific to what you say you are going to do. And to me, that's a, that's a, that's a problem. And I'm sure that we're still going to be revising this, but as we move forward, I think we need to be very mindful of, not just saying, for example, when we say, "School, school staff shall collaborate with students and parents to strengthen connections, to prevent absences." How are you going to do that? What exactly are you going to put in place to prevent that? So how much of that would you invest for you to not have that? Because in reality, the new LCAP, that's what it's for. They want you to be more detailed on how you're going to spend the stakeholders' money. And you need to be very specific on how you're going to do that. And right now, it's all generic. I, I'm not seeing that.
And what you're looking at is the...
I'm just giving an example.
No, but that, but what you pulled out was an analysis from last year to this year, which was very generic. And so we had a difficult time doing the analysis because there was nothing that was specific. So what you're going to see, what you should see in the new goals is the specificity. We're going to be, and so that's when you look at the, the actions and services as they tie to the, um, annual measurable, um, outcomes from right up above it. So for example, on page twenty-nine, I don't have my glasses, on page twenty-nine, goal one. You'll see metrics and indicators. You're going to see the specifics under metrics and indicators for the first action. And these are the things that we're going to use to measure whether we, we were successful or not. For every metric, you also should see an action to use that metric. So, so we might, we're going to be going back and tweaking some of this to do that.
Yeah, we definitely need to because right now it's not really relevant to any of other charter schools, um, um, in general. Like when you're looking at LCAPs. And we all, I don't also see, um, because I know the new law talks about kids, um, from military. I know we probably don't, but I think we should include that in case we do have kids from military families. So I think it's important that you show that your school, even though you don't have that, um, population, but you are more willing and open to have those kind of kids. And if they are part of the program, this is the step that you will be taking for them. So it's important for us to include that also in our LCAP.
Perfect. And that's the, that's the reason for this. The way it's the public hearing is to be able to take that kind of input so we can go back and, 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 uh, make those adjustments and bring it back to you as a final document. Okay.
So does somebody scribble that down?
Hopefully. It's got recorded.
It's a good one.
We can listen to the recording.
I just want to make sure we do. Somebody's, so it says Joseph is going to do this by this day.
Well, we're going to be sitting down and, and going back through this document, you know, piece by piece and, and making our corrections.
We need to get you over that cough by then.
It's actually a hundred percent better. I believe it or not, it is.
No, a hundred percent would suggest it's not there.
Yeah.
No, if you consider what it was, okay, it's seventy-five percent better.
That's more mathematically possible. Okay. So do we invite the public to?
Public can give input.
Do they have to submit a comment card?
No, this is public time. They can just come up to the podium and speak as long as they want, actually.
Don't be shy. Having survived the rush, a public comment. Our next step would be, we're going to close the, uh, public meeting at, uh, five oh five PM. And open up our public hearing at five oh five PM to take input on the proposed two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget for each school, including multi-year projections. The board will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input, recommendations and suggestions regarding the drafts of proposed budgets for each school.
So are we in a public hearing?
We are in a public hearing. At the five oh seven PM.
Oswaldo, you're on.
Well, pursuant to California Ed Code forty-seven, six oh four point thirty-three, we are required to submit budgets, uh, on an, on an annual basis. Thank you. We are required to submit budgets on an annual basis and no later, approved, uh, by the board, no later than July first. As part of this process, we are bringing this budget for discussion, not for voting, but discussion. And, uh, just to walk you through, uh, various items that I believe are important for the board and the community to know. And, uh, with that, I would like to start with the, uh, current considerations that we, we took as we were putting together this budget. First of all, the student enrollment as, uh, during the, uh, the board, uh, I should say, during the preparation of this budget. We took into consideration full enrollment of five hundred and ninety-three students for Saddleback Valley and, uh, seven hundred and ninety-seven for SOC. So, uh, what, uh, what that equates is that, uh, we will have full enrollment and that was taken into consideration during, during the preparation of the budget. Uh, another, uh, consideration that was taken was, uh, the COLA of, uh, three percent increase. So what we took is for certain expenses, we, we actually took into consideration inflation of three percent and we increased that accordingly. And, uh, also I would like to point out as, as, as we were preparing this, uh, document, that, uh, we, we do have a notice of intent to revoke. These budgets were prepared, assuming that, uh, that the staff, uh, this, uh, the board of Capistrano Unified would, will actually go against the, uh, the, the staff recommendation. And, uh, if, uh, if, uh, the board actually moves forward with the intent to revoke, we would actually have to revisit this budget. So this budget is actually assuming that we will have a Prop thirty-nine site. And that, uh, we will not go through, uh, the process of shutting down the school. So, uh, what, uh, as, as I was preparing the budgets, one, one of the things that I wanted to do was, first of all, that, uh, these budgets, we were, uh, really able to adjust to financial situations. Let's say a decrease in student enrollment, also that we were flexible enough if we had, uh, unexpected expenditures. And that is why if you look at the, both, uh, budgets, you will see a, a surplus of, uh, cash at the end of the year in both cases. And that was done intentionally, not, uh, not because we, we actually were, uh, reducing expenses left and right. But it was more with the intent to have the flexibility to deal both with, uh, a decrease in student enrollment, that's one. And the other, uh, if we had mitigating circumstances that require expenditures that, uh, that were unforeseen at the moment of preparation of this budget. Also, I, I would like to point out, just, just in the case of SOC, and right now I'm, I'm talking broad strokes right here. That, uh, there were certain, uh, factors that actually require us to prepare the budgets as they are being prepared. And one of them was, uh, the accelerated depreciation. Uh, US GAAP requires us to actually depreciate and recognize, uh, the, the expenditures of, uh, the, all of the leasehold improvements that were actually provided on the SOC site. Uh, no later than the end of the next fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen. And the reason behind it is that, uh, since our, our, our charter is up for renewal next year and we don't have certainty if that is going to be renewed or not. That we are required by US GAAP to actually accelerate the depreciation both this year, that we're going to take, uh, a hit in depreciation of roughly four hundred thousand and next year of five hundred thousand. So, uh, that's, uh, one of the factors that actually mitigated us to, uh, reduce our expenditures as I will talk in a moment. In addition to that, we have Champion Village. Champion Village was, uh, a, uh, a source of revenue for the organization. And just to give an example, Saddleback Valley, just this year, this current fiscal year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, received two hundred and ninety-one thousand as of April of fees. Of course, uh, part of it was to actually, uh, pay for the, uh, the staff that ran the, the, the program. But in addition to that, we actually had a lot of spillover that we used to pay not only for staff, uh, operating the schools, but also expenditures that were used for the schools. And for SOC, we had a similar amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of, uh, uh, revenue in fees that we received during fiscal year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, as of April. Of course, uh, this number does not include the fees that we received in the month of May. And, uh, taking, taking all of that into consideration, the accelerated depreciation, the Champion Village fees and also the, uh, uh, salary increases to our teachers. All of that combined, just at SOC amounted to a, uh, a deficit of about a million dollars. So if you combine all of that, both the reduction of, uh, the Champion Village, also the depreciation that we're talking about five hundred thousand. And, uh, this, the salary increase, and I'm, I'm sorry to reiterate this, but I believe that is very important. All of that, the net effect of those three items is a, a million dollars negatively impacting SOC. So as I'm, I'm moving forward in the narrative, the, uh, let me touch base on the most important piece, which is the salaries and benefits. They account roughly for seventy-five percent of all of our expenditures within the organization. So, uh, we could actually cut expenses in other, uh, areas, but, uh, really where our, uh, the, uh, most of our expenditures are, are salaries and benefits. And, uh, in the case of SOC, we had increased certificated, uh, comparing it year over year, we had an increase in certificated, uh, expenditures or in salaries of two hundred, uh, one thousand, two hundred thousand. And that amounts to eight point zero nine percent of, uh, increases in, uh, I'm not saying salaries, but overall expenditures of, uh, uh, certificated salaries in the case of SOC. And in the case of, uh, Saddleback Valley, the increase was two hundred and fifty-three thousand and that, uh, equated to twelve, twelve point sixty-eight percent increase in the case of certificated. In the, uh, in the case of classified expenditures in SOC, we actually, in order to balance our budget, we had to reduce it, we, we need to reduce it by six hundred thousand. That's both classified and administrative and that equates to a... And that equates to a decrease of forty-four point fifty percent in S O C. And in the case of Saddleback Valley, we are also talking about a reduction of three hundred and fifty thousand for classified and admin salaries that, uh, amounts to thirty-four point fifty-nine percent decrease.
Osvaldo, is that, uh, did you back out this STIRS anomaly that we had?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, so we had this STIRS misstep, right, where we had to make this artificial contribution of STIRS that was, that we missed? Remember, we missed some STIRS payments?
Are we talking about Chino?
No. Well, we were actually talking about.
I want to make sure that the STIRS isn't part of the, the STIRS isn't part of the budget numbers. Okay, so that's been backed out, right? So that was an anomaly and that's been, that wasn't included in this.
Yes, that, that is correct. And I'm sorry that I, uh, took a little bit of hesitation, but I, I really wanted to understand the question. Yes. No, it's not included.
Uh, Mr. Diaz, I have a few, uh, questions. One, uh, one general one, this says charter impact on it. Um, what was your level involvement in actually preparing this and providing input versus charter?
Well, actually, it was a hundred percent. The, uh, in, in the case of charter impact, what they do is, uh, they take the numbers that I provide and they put it, uh, into a spreadsheet.
So they just made it look pretty.
Originally, no. Originally, they, they did provide me with a template that included, uh, the, uh, the numbers that they were actually suggesting based on, uh, our previous expenditures, but I, I redid all of the numbers.
Okay. So they copied your homework?
It was, yeah, well, yes, exactly.
Now, uh.
And, and let me, let me just be clear. Uh, back office, it's, they're, they're more of book, uh, are bookkeepers. They, they follow our instructions. They, they don't make any decisions. They, they don't have this, the, they do have a responsibility, but not a fiduciary responsibility to the organization. So of course, at the end of the day, I am the one that needs to look at every single line item.
So you rest your laurels on these numbers?
Uh, I'm not, uh, saying that. I'm just saying that, uh, these are the numbers that we need to have in order to actually have a balanced budget.
Okay, so with regard to S, starting with S O C, um, under other state revenue, it goes from about a quarter million to thirty-nine thousand. Go over that again?
Yes, uh, give me one second, please.
What page are you on?
Uh, the first page of S O C.
Okay.
That's because we closed Open Las Vegas.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, which, which line item are you looking at?
Eight five nine nine, other state revenue.
So is the bottom. It's the last, the last.
Under other state revenue?
Sorry, sorry, I was looking at the wrong.
Starting with S O C.
This is, this actually relates to the, uh, the one-time, uh, state grant, and this is non-recurring.
Um, onto eight six eight nine, other fees and contracts.
Just one moment, please.
Are you still on S O C?
Yeah, I'm gonna, all these are S O C, I'll tell you when I switch.
Oh, I found it. Okay.
One moment, please.
Page one.
It's still page one.
Yeah.
I expect to hear like really dramatic cold music. One moment, please.
Hey, I, I already have an answer. Let, let me just confirm, make sure that that's before I answer.
Hey, Josh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Perfect. So part, part of that, it's, uh, or I, I should say, uh, eighty-five to ninety percent of this amount is Champion Village.
Okay, that's what I figured. Did you, did you want to?
Uh, no, I wanted, you keep going.
Okay. Um, uh, going on to, uh, to page two, uh, classified salaries. It's a fairly, fairly steep decrease, uh, between, uh, eighteen and nineteen. Um, what's, uh, what's the big delta there?
So, uh, as, as I was mentioning a moment ago, and, uh, this is S O C, we actually have an overall delta of six hundred thousand that accounts to, uh, a decrease of forty-four point fifty percent. Now, uh, uh, this, as, as I was, uh, mentioning a moment ago, this is only for discussion and, and of course, I need to revisit the numbers both with, uh, the team and, uh, uh, in, in order to make sure that we, uh, distribute the, uh, the expenditures accordingly. Uh, the idea is to keep the same bottom line, but at the end of the day, we do need to have, uh, this, uh, bottom line that we currently have.
Does this, does the, what, the budget that stands right now, does this incorporate the salary schedule, the revised salary schedule for non-certificated staff that we voted on earlier?
We didn't.
Oh, we didn't vote on it.
We did vote on it. It was, it was.
Oh, oh, oh.
It was tied. Didn't pass. Is that, is this reflective of that salary schedule?
Yes. So we, we would actually have to revisit the numbers. Yes.
Um, that's all I had on S O C. So moving over to S V.
I have an S O C question.
Oh, go ahead.
If we want to just keep it together.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, thanks for the clarification for everybody's benefit about what the back office provider does, charter impact, pri, up, up until July first and then this new firm after that. Thanks for that explanation. So now that you're here, they're answering questions that they probably didn't answer or didn't get asked previously. This accelerated depreciation, uh, question. So when was it known, or when should we have known, that this, at the time of the expense it would seem, right? So this seems like it's new information showing up now about this accelerated depreciation number.
I, I don't know if there was a discussion prior to me joining the organization. I know that, uh, that Andy brought it up as, uh, soon as we started, uh, having the conversation. I, uh.
He brought it up when you started talking about it?
Well, no, no, no. When we started, uh, going over the budgets and the numbers, the financial information.
Got it.
So, A- Andy brought it up and, uh, I, of course, I, I wanted to make sure that, uh, that we were required to actually have this accelerated depreciation. So I both, uh, contacted, uh, external accountants and, uh, a le, uh, legal counsel as well, just to make sure if there was a way to actually extend this and not have the, the big hit in accelerated depreciation. Unfortunately, uh, U S Gap requires us to actually, uh, take the, the hit on this accelerated depreciation just because we don't have certainty of, uh, being able to retain that site. That, that is what it's accelerating, the, the depreciation.
Understood. And this is all related to leasehold improvements that were done to S O C?
This are leasehold improvements that were done at the, at the beginning of fiscal year seventeen eighteen by the former, uh, principal. And roughly, and, uh, honor about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars of leasehold improvements.
But just to be clear, there's nothing wrong with having made the leasehold improvements. It just becomes a problem now in light of the N O V.
That is correct. Yep.
And were these accelerated depreciation payments put in the books the moment that those leasehold improvements were made?
Yes, they were. But, uh, the, uh, just to answer your question, uh, they, they, uh, there should have been a mechanism where this, uh, accelerated depreciation was brought to whoever was at, at the time in leadership, senior leadership, saying, yes, you're going to invest this much money, but if we don't have an assurance of, uh, renewing this lease, this is what is going to happen.
Okay, so say that again. So I'm a, I'm a principal. I want to make some, I want to make eight hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. I'm gonna say, hey, I want to make eight hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. My C B O says, uh, no, not a good idea to do that. Or just balance whatever your improvements are with the, the, the budgetary hit that this depreciation is gonna have.
Yes, it would be, uh, we, we can make the, uh, or we can incur the expenditures as long as we have, uh, certainty that, uh, we will get renewed.
Is that any extra question, Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I'm looking for a word that describes like, I don't like it. I hear it. I understand it, but I don't like it. So what do I say? Rrrr.
That's cleaner than the word I was thinking of, so.
So, uh, most of my questions regarding to S V are, I think they, uh, parallel the same kind of issues that I had with S O C, except one. Um, eight six nine nine, school fundraising on the first page, it's sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is really good. But then you have it budgeted out as zero after that. I'm just curious as to why.
That one is still preliminary. Uh, the, the number will be, uh, assessed as, as soon as, uh, I have a, a conversation with the executive director. I was actually waiting to have that conversation with our, uh, executive director to just find out what are the, uh, uh, the resources that he or she believes that, uh, will be, we will be able to collect. At this point, that's a number that, uh, that I, that I'm hesitant to actually just copy paste from the previous fiscal year without, uh, having any additional input.
Now, that's not money from Honor Society, right?
Uh, no, that would be, uh, additional, uh, revenues that, uh, that are fundraised.
Now, just because this is something that is out there in the wild, claiming that our organizations are tapping Honor Society for our operations, is there Honor Society money showing up anywhere on this budget?
Uh, no. Not that I can, uh, state, no.
I appreciate the clarification.
My, my question is, should I include Honor Society?
It's a separate organization with their own accounts, books, records, tax returns.
But, but his point is a really good one. Is there a way we can clarify the school fundraising to say not Honor Society on there?
Not supporting organizations, maybe with a footnote, clarifying? Internal fundraising?
Internal fundraising.
No, 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 and, uh, and that's a conversation that I want to have with the executive director.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the, uh? No, thank you, Mr. Diaz. How about from the public? Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Why we do? Mr. Sessions?
He's on the roll.
You're a regular at the podium. Please join it one more time.
Hello, friends. Um, so the budget, I, I just think, looking at this from a longevity standpoint, I think that the board should definitely, for next year, I, I think, um, we had budgeted originally for one point five deans. I think one dean can do the job at S O C. So I think that, that's where that number should be. Also, I do think that, um, we should have a blended executive director slash chancellor, um, because our numbers, like the, the salary right now is two hundred and ten thousand, right, for the E D. We're paying a hundred and twenty-six thousand of that, sixty percent, right? That would allow us to save a good bit of money if we weren't having to pay for both of those. I say this because if you look at the numbers for the curriculum, it's at fifty-four thousand. Um, that's really not, i- if we kept it fifty-four thousand, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight for the next five years, that would mean we get eureka math and maybe some cheap supplementals, but we never get an E L A curriculum. We never get new science curriculum. It's not realistic. To get E L A curriculum next year, the numbers are a hundred and fifty-two thousand. So if we were gonna try to save money to make that happen, I think it would be smart as an organization to have a blended chancellor slash executive director role, because you can't be an executive director if there's not two sites and if they're not sustainable. So I think that's critical. Like, these, these numbers, I think, are very lowballed in a number of places. And this is also taking into account that we're doing six hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts at classified, right? And they're still not looking good. We will never get new curriculum at S O C with these numbers. That's eureka math. It's forty-four thousand a year at S O C. No E L A, no science. It's not sustainable, right? We need to have that be a, it needs to be both. It does. Um, and I think that's doable, to be E D slash chancellor. Um, it would provide the E D a chance to meet the stakeholders, know the community, and also really have their pulse on what's happening, um, with the organization. Uh, but that is just my concern, because this currently shows that there is no, there is no money for E L A curriculum. Um, our preliminary scores have come in. They're looking good, but it's obvious, when you guys see it, when it's finalized in the fall, that we need a curriculum, right? It can't be choose your own adventure, right? And let's figure it out. Because at some point, we can't just bank on, well, we're good, so we're always gonna go up, right? There's always gonna be a threshold where you can't just bank on, well, we're just naturally gonna go forward. That doesn't happen, right? We need to invest in curriculum to help our teachers do their job. Um, so that's just some of the concerns that I have. Also with the instructional salaries going from a hundred, uh, five thirty-one to forty-one thousand, it, it's one of those things that our non-court teachers already do feel not as valued. And if we're gonna be lowering their, uh, pay, right, it's further gonna create that dynamic of like second-class citizens on the campus. So I strongly recommend one dean and then chancellor slash, um, E D is what needs to happen. So, thank you.
A super dean. Super dean. So, so were you able to, uh, that's fantastic feedback. Is there, are we able to incorporate that kind of E L A budget in?
Uh, that, that would actually have to be a conversation both with the team, because of course, I'm not, I'm not, uh, the, uh, educational expert. I'm the finance expert and they need to let me know how, uh, how to model that. And, uh, but I, I do think that, uh, those are really great suggestions. I mean, having that blended component will definitely reduce expenses.
Got it. And when you say, they need to let me know, they're letting us know right now.
Yes, no, but.
And so let's put some notes in there that say.
And, uh.
Yeah, I'm not saying just let's add it, cause Nick said so, we love him, but let's at least put, put some notes in there that say, hey, this curriculum number should really have, uh, you know, shouldn't be just sort of the get-along number.
And, and, and we've added the actual curriculum numbers that we need in there?
We've added the actual curriculum numbers that we need in there. Um, one of the things I would like you to remember, um, in particular, in relationship to this budget, is this budget is based upon just new revenues and it is not based on closing of the books and carrying over expenses, or excuse me, carrying over, um, money that we can use for one-time expenditures. And some of this is, what we're talking about is one-time expenditures.
So Kathleen, when we talk about programs educationally for S O C, um, Michelle will be involved in those discussions as well, right?
Uh, at this point, yes.
Okay, awesome.
She actually has made a lot of recommendations already.
What is the process for running this through our site admin and the teachers so that we get the feedback, so that we know that E L, they need an E L A curriculum and ultimately gets reflected in this budget?
A lot of that shows up in your L cap and, and the survey that we did. Uh, but we sit down with the admin to say, tell us what you need. And that's where we, we have, we had that discussion with, um, all of the admin, with Osvaldo, when he was going through his, um, uh, Excel spreadsheet and put, plugging in numbers to begin with.
So the E L A, cause it sounds like the, the site leadership for S O C says we need E L A curriculum. That shows up in the L cap. Where is it on the budget and why am I?
It's, it, it's not reflected in the budget at this point in time.
Is, is that because, unless I'm mistaken, we did not do a staff survey for L cap, right? Is that correct?
They did, yeah, the, the staff.
They did other surveys?
They did, they did the general survey. And so they had a list of whether they were staff or not on the general parent survey. But we do take that input. Each of the staff members at, at S O C sat with the admin and they talked about what they needed individually. And so then they, they kept a, a kind of a running chart, but did, uh, a chart over all of the staff requests. So they did it on a case, on a one-by-one basis, so every staff member had input.
Okay, and then Michelle was part of that process as well?
Yes.
Are there any additional comments or questions from the public at large?
I have a question.
Or from the board?
Osvaldo, is there, um, I know there are some grants out there, so can we look into grants as well for those kind of curriculum? Cause I know there are plenty out there. We just probably never looked into it and that could help a lot.
That is actually correct. And, uh, in the past, uh, senior management did not, uh, wanna pursue, uh, uh, federal grants that are available. Uh, the reasons why are unknown to me. But, uh, I know that, uh, there's title funds that we could actually pursue. There's also, uh, the, uh, the communications grant, the E rate.
E rate, yeah.
E rate that would actually pay for a lot of our communications expenses that are very high, by the way, that, uh, we, we could actually get, uh, grants for.
What communications expenses are high? With our lawyers?
It's, uh, no, no, no. We're, we're talking about, uh, actual communications of internet, telephone, uh, uh, all of those expenses are, are high as well. Well, not, not high, I, I mean, as a percentage of other expenditures. That's what I mean.
But those are some things that we're eliminating from the budget right now, just so that you know.
And, uh, but we, we are actively, uh, looking to, to apply for, for those grants. And unfortunately, in the past, we, we did not.
Okay, that sounds good, because anything that we could save, I'll say, go for it.
And if you ask them that number, it's. And if you ask them that number, it's like 300, 400,000?
That is correct.
Yeah.
No, that's a big number.
Yeah.
So there's a bunch of grants out there that we weren't?
Yeah, we, we should take advantage of them. Why not?
Well, because we have a CBO who can do it and speaks that ability.
I, I would like everybody to know, of course, that those grants re, of course, they, they do require, in some instances, the state and the federal government to actually review the, the grant and the expenditures, which I don't have any problem with. I, I think that as we're being more transparent, that's, that's something that I wouldn't have a problem with.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, well, yes.
But there's other, there's other stuff that are going to-
And actually, Dr. Hall mentioned something very important. In the case of title funds, of course, those are expenditures that are very targeted and, and they need to be spent in a certain way, just as the E-rate as well or other grants that we're looking at, like in the case of reimbursement of meals as well. So they're, they're very targeted.
I, I do get that. And I know because we are charter schools, there are certain regulations and rules. But I also know, as a charter, there are other things out there for us that we can look into that we haven't visited, and I don't see why not.
There's a lot of them out there.
There's a lot of them out there. So we should explore them.
One, one thing that our new back officer's provider exit knows, and they're actually actively looking for, is that. It's additional resources that we can tap into, to bring to the organization.
Thank you.
And that, that is a job of the back office, by the way.
Yeah. Thank you.
And it's your job to make sure they do it?
Yes, that is correct.
So we'll throw it open to the public one more time on the public hearing on the budget. No additional feedback. To the board one additional time. Forever hold your peace, or at least until it's given to us as a finalized budget. All right. We are now leaving the public hearing to take input on the proposed 2018-19 budget for each school, including multi-year projections at 5:37 PM. Board will now return to closed session at 5:37 PM. All right, we returned from closed session at 8:23 PM with nothing to report out from closed session. We have two matters that remain outstanding that we tabled to come back to post-closed session. First one. Yeah, I'm looking for the item number. Is item number 3F1, approve Theodora Oranger Legal Services invoice. Board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. The invoice from Theodora Oranger for legal services performed in March 2018 in the amount of $29,618.46 is brought to the board for consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the Theodora Oranger Legal Services invoice?
Can I make a motion to table that until next week pending consultation? Yes, there you go.
Perfect. Do I have a second on the motion to table approval of the invoice for Theodora Oranger until next week?
I second.
Okay, the motion is to approve tabling it until next week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda for approval is item number F2, approve Momni Cafe invoices. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. These invoices from Momni Cafe for services performed in April and May of 2018 in the amount of $50,955.06 are brought to the board for consideration. Item 3F2A is the April interim executive director and/or board training and personnel services in the amount of $23,945.045. And item 3F2B, May executive director, personnel and document retrieval in the amount of $27,054.61. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of both invoices pending review verification by our CBO.
Verification of dates.
Verification of dates and compliance with our contract.
Okay. Do I have a second for the motion to approve payment of these sums subject to the CBO's confirmation of the dates and compliance with the terms of our contract?
I second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
And what do we need to do to enact, to have some sort of protocol in place so that all those invoices get reviewed by the CBO ahead of time? And he gets to come to us that says, hey, I've, you know, randomly verified some events in there. I've also compared this to what our contract says and this is, so we get that sort of stamp of approval at the time that we receive those invoices, A. And B, that we have a great relationship with our vendors and we tell them they're not doing us any services by invoicing us every three months. You know, that we get regular invoices, not, that they don't wait on anything. I'm talking about law firms and all of it, because they, they're all doing that. Where we get these gigantic invoices.
Good point. We can look at adding something in our invoicing procedures and, and adding that that says that the CBO must review and approve before bringing it to the board so that it comes from the CBO rather than just placed on the agenda. And we can send out a request to all of our vendors that wait to say we would appreciate it if you would bill us monthly.
Yeah, and if you do it more than once, we're going to pay this one and we'll pay the other one next month.
I don't, I don't need, I don't think we need to request. I think we are directing them to do so.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Mercifully, that brings us to item four, adjournment. Recommend the board of directors adjourn the regular board meeting for June 18th, 2018. Do I have a motion? I heard a question.
Just kidding.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? No, none opposed? This motion passes, this move, this meeting is closed at 8:28 PM.